Elections over, too many banks and credit unions are pretty scarce what they're gonna do right now.
Yeah.
The election's over.
So I just mainly looked at six month and 12 month CDs and Elizabeth said counties do it. So I will gather more information and report back for you guys approval before we do anything.
It's nice to have money make money.
Yeah. Yep, now we got it.
Get it?
Thank you. Yeah, so evidently ten years on, it doesn't allow me, when I click it on, it automatically clicks it back off.
I'm totally signed out.
That's weird. Okay, that's what it is. We got her figured out.
Okay. So, will you approve the monthly help, rest report?
Don't move.
I, yeah, I made first amendment.
And I guess second, on favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved monthly departmental budget reports?
So this is something new. I did a little research and I found that many years ago, this was all done in a spreadsheet. So I started working in our financial software. So basically, this just shows you, and I can do these monthly upon request, what each department has spent out of their budget, and then it shows the remaining percent of their budget, so.
And I like these reports because it just kind of gives us the opportunity to go back there and review and see where everything's standing at and stuff. And thank you very much for doing the total end of the year too, Chris. Appreciate that.
And I think I did send just some with just the fund balances also for each month.
Morning, guys.
Just a little FYI, if you guys want those on a monthly basis, I don't have a problem with running them.
I would like them on a monthly basis. That's what lets me know where the prisons are sitting.
Where you're sitting.
You need a motion. I think that's approval, so I'll make a motion to approve them.
I have the first. Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, approve the resignation of Orland Love for the Veterans Affairs Commission.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then, do you folks want me to get the publication going to, go ahead and advertise for that position? I think Julie said there's also one whose term ends in December. So we'd probably do them both at the same time, appoint one to fill the vacancy, and then appoint the other one to fill the term that expires in December going forward.
It sounds like the one that's expiring in December, thinking about reapplying, so.
Okay.
But we can open that up to anybody. And what I found out, it's really nice, being a veteran myself, war veteran, I, we strive to try and make sure we got an accounting distribution, which it's been working out pretty good because we had Independence one, we had Hazleton, we had one from the southern end of the county, so it worked out good. We kind of had them scattered around, but when I go to veterans meetings, I can reach out and let people know that if they want to apply, they should, so.
There you go, thank you.
Well, you're gonna be retiring here shortly. You can step right on there.
I might be interested in that, but that won't, can't happen until after December 31st.
Whoa.
Got it. Okay.
There's certain criteria and all, but of course, it's gotta be that for that position.
Okay. Um, moving on. Items for discussion placed on file to follow manure management plans, Super 8 Westburg Township, Section 35, De Sosa Site, Westburg Township, Section 30, Coffin Site, Fairbank Township, Section 18, Alphantes, Middlefield Township, Section 9, FLF, LTD, Fremont Township, Section 28, BMT Pigs, Jefferson Township, Section 9, Roderick Higgins, Comer Township, Section 8. That's it? So can I have a motion to place on my file, please?
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Uh, motion carries.
All right, Gina's not gonna be here today. She had to run her father to a doctor's appointment, but, paperwork's in here. It's with the city of Independence. It's one of those deals that,
Court order.
It was court ordered. It was basically an abandoned property. And so we are ordered to abate the $540 worth of taxes.
I reviewed the paperwork and since it's court order, we need to move forward, so I'll make a motion to approve that a day.
I'll second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, Chris, discuss the purchase of Election Security Transport Carts.
Okay, I sent all this information to you folks. Um, I would like to purchase these using ARPA funds, means we still have them available. Basically, what it's, with these carts, what it's gonna allow us to do is I can pack up absolutely every piece of equipment, um, the bags, whatever's needed to go out to a precinct. They are lockable. And that way, it all goes in one unit for us to load. So instead of making about 40 trips out to a trailer, we're gonna make 14. And we'll also, down the road, save on paying our chairpeople the added mileage and the hourly rate, because the way we do it right now, they come in Monday night before the election, they pick up the ballots, they pick up the iPads and take those out, and then after the election that evening, they bring them back. This way, they can put everything in there, shut things down, load everything back into the cart and lock it up. The next morning, we go out and pick everything up. Um, the email that I originally sent you, I was thinking it was gonna be close to $15,000, and like I told the gal, give me the best deal you can. And she did come through. It's a lot cheaper than what I initially thought.
After being involved with, I know what it's like to deliver and pick up, because I did both, and it's, it's quite a job to do that. You know, a lot in and out, going through the doorways and stuff, and I can see where it's gonna be a lot more efficient.
Well, and the sheriff has been,
Save some money.
Yeah, and the sheriff has been fortunate enough, or I guess I've been fortunate enough, I should. He's been the one that usually gets stuck in the trailer trying to tie everything down because it's on wheels and keep it from moving all over. And it's putting together a puzzle, basically, is what it is.
Yeah. Keep the precincts separate.
The sheriff is the official scrap master.
Well, I had a bad experience with that because Gissel took a trailer and went one way, and I took a trailer and went the other way to go pick up, and I got out there to site and all the bungee straps were gone. He took them all and put them in his trailer.
I know, yeah. Well, and then I'd also, with these carts, I'd also get the covers, and I don't, once I get them, I'll figure out more, but I can have them either embroidered or somehow labeled which precinct it goes through too. So once we get the cart loaded, throw the cover on, and then we can just load them in order the way we need it, and that the delivery people just have to grab it, pull it out, and wheel it in.
You have a residential prepared?
I don't yet, but it wouldn't take me long to do one.
I'll make a motion that we go over ahead and prove that, make that, who will have purchase using ARPA.
I'd second that. I think that's a great idea.
I've got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome. Sounds like it's gonna really streamline the process. All right, discuss M2B Structural Engineers L-L invoice and further action.
I think you, um, did everybody get the report from them on their findings and recommendations?
Yes.
Okay, it's, uh, I was very pleased to hear what I heard from them because the integrity and the strength has not been compromised down there. Hold up the generator. So it's more of a TLC type thing, uh, that he's recommending that, they expose to rerod and some of the things we sand, blast, they cleaned up and put it, rust prohibitive on that, and then, and re-concrete seal that, them areas and stuff, so that's something we'll have to reach out if we decide to, and reach out to a contractor to do that, recommendations.
Can we use ARPA funds for that also?
Yes, we can use ARPA funds for anything for normal expenditures.
I, I think that's a imperative to get that done as soon as possible, just you get to go through every things going on down there.
Oh, uh, hey, I don't know. I guess I'll start reaching. I'll pick who's contractors, who can handle this type of work and stuff.
I think I gave a recommendation in there.
It'd be nice to have two or three bids though.
Yeah. And I'll reach out to Marson's too and see if they'd be interested in doing something like that. I'll get a hold of Fordy Press and have him take a look at it, and then you do have another recommendation, so. We'll get a couple, see if we can get a couple, three bids on that.
I'd make a motion to move forward with that.
You have a first? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I have one quick question, please. The current invoice we received for 550, do you want me to take that just out of our general services courthouse maintenance?
I think so, because we,
And then, once you receive the bids and approve, then we can do the resolution to use ARPA funds on that?
For the repair.
Right, for the repairs?
Yeah, that sounds great. Let's move ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey. Proposal proposals for outside water, so we get repairs and replacement.
Okay. We got, we got two bids from local contractors, plumbing companies on this. Uh, we have got a quote from Precision, and he said he would have no problem with, he wouldn't have to have a mason. He said they, they got the tools and equipment that they can work with the brick, if they gotta do some reforming and change, make a hole on the insert for spigot, so they wouldn't have to do that, hire somebody else to come in and do that. So we got a quote from them for $5,210. Replace all the spigots and add the shut-off valve inside. And he recommended that they freeze the lines too, so they don't have to shut the water off, put a whole courthouse. Now, the one from Independence Plumbing and Heating is a proposal estimated cost. And they're estimated on here for them doing the work. And then for the mason, they would, they would use Iowa Walsaw. And their total's up to $5,550, but that's just a proposal estimate cost. So he, if we go by that, he would have the ability to change that. So.
Well, there's no, there's no saying that Precision's gonna stay at its full either if something else happens.
Well, something really go bad, yes.
Which one was the lower one?
Uh, Precision.
Precision was.
I'd make a motion to approve the Precision quote.
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second. I have a question. Um, when it frees those lines, what happened? Like, I mean, I'm going back to when I was a kid and Grandma's water line froze up and Dad had to thaw it out, and it, what happened, and I just, I,
Disagree. We mean, how, when it needs thawed, it'll just be a gradual thaw.
It's not gonna hurt the lines?
No. Uh, Independence Plumbing has did this before here. It's kind of a normal thing for plumbing companies to do this. And the trouble is, if we shut the water off to the building, you know, and if they don't have it done by eight o'clock, we've gotta change your hours and get them in here super early, so we can get the water back on to the building when the courthouse opens. And when you shut the water off for the whole building because of our old water lines, it just takes real small, minute particles to start floating around the lines, and then they get the automatic flush valves, and then they plug up the orifice. So then we gotta run around. We have stools that are continuously flushing until we tear the valve apart and get that orifice cleaned out. So it kind of cau- can cause major problems with stool flushing around or anything. So it's, it's a good idea if we can just individually freeze that line and we don't have to shut the water off for the whole building and take the chance of not having to turn back on by eight o'clock.
Okay. Answer my question. So I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discuss the purchase of trailer for patching through.
That's me.
That's you, Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I had Tom look around. Existing trailer is too light for the stuff they've got on it, so if they got caught by weight enforcement, the operator would be in trouble. So we need to be providing them a trailer to have enough for carrying their hammer and such.
What do you do with the old trailer?
We'll have it here. We usually find a use for it, but if there was something where, um, where tourism or somebody needed, we could definitely talk to the guys and see if we could part with it.
Is this a single, is this one a single or dual item?
I think they're sitting on a single right now, but it, but it might even be dual, but it's just too light axles yet Clayton, so this is the heavier one. And they can get one for $59.95 for a 14,000 pound trailer. So you can get the, you can get the duels even at, down there about 8,000 pounds is where I'm guessing it's at.
So how much was it again, Brian? I didn't catch it.
$5,995.
You've got plenty of money in the budget for that.
Plenty of money is one thing, but nothing for this easy, yes.
He seems kind of like nipping at the eases.
Well, Yes, thank you, thank you. Yeah, let's go back to that, that other comment or subject even, um, because I was kind of mentioning to Clayton earlier, we're dragging our feet on hiring back. Now the risk because of funding. If I'm, my costs are going up 5% and I'm allowed 2% growth? Yeah.
What's gonna show this trailer?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess, think about it is, if, if the operator knows that he's illegal, he can refuse to pull that trailer legally because he can't be forced to take, do something.
That's right. That's it. That's the way it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we need to work with the guys and.
I guess we need to make sure we can walk through and do the project, so let's make a move from there out. I think it's in your budget, so I don't even know why we gotta do anything on that.
Well, this is just the, what we've done in the past.
I think we shouldn't do, allow Brian to purchase that trailer.
You have a first?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I could have covered with, uh, he got three quotes. Avalon Travers Right Way and Patton Equipment's the one that was the least. And then my next.
They check up here, uh, this right north of town, uh, they're selling trailers up here.
Over.
Um, Powers, did it a power force? What do they call it?
Oh, Maverick Power.
I can talk to Tom.
There's Northeast Iowa Trailer in Jessup too.
Yep. There is, right there.
Okay, so I'm authorized to get a trailer, whichever one's cheapest, the bad class. Yeah, I'm gonna write this down.
Of course, you gotta make sure that is, sometimes the railing's different on them trailers and stuff. You have to make sure that it's,
Some put together specs so you can, Northeast Tyler, Iowa Trailer at Jessup and who else?
Maverick Power.
Or, and a yes, or independent.
Independence. All right, there we go.
That was just got to purchase a right away on January 35th.
Yes, and I've got the flats. We've got the agreements approved by, through the county attorney's office.
Have you seen the authorization to sign? Because isn't that a,
Authorization to sign.
The person that's gonna sign, maybe on the other side.
I've got two people that we're dealing with. The first one is, I'm gonna say Jeff Primal's first, but he's single, alone.
Right.
So he'd be, the next one is the TJ Farms, and,
LLC.
LLC. And so he has not provided me with that or the names of his kids, but he was gonna get one or the other. And so once, I thought, before we could get him recorded, we'd have to have that clarified and cleared up. But if I hadn't signed.
He has, yeah, because we'll, we'll need some kind of authorization for him to sign that agreement to make it legal, whenever you're doing transfers of property that.
Yes, that he, yeah, he was told he either needs proof that he's got it, and he says, I've got that.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, it would be part of his LLC when he,
Yeah. So, yes, Dawn, I, I haven't seen that from him yet, but, but we've had those discussions with him.
So how does it, how does it all work? I mean, this is gonna have to be under abstracts, it's gonna have to wind up showing this and everything else, so.
Yes, and they get, they get, under the, uh, reporting agreement, this is what it amounts to. And so what happens is they get paid a filing fee too, to get that brought up to date. So, um, but the way, the way that, the way the system set up to work, under $10,000, we can do a compensation estimate. So what we did is we took the average land sale for crop land in Buchanan County. Now, we did, we did dig up their CSR ratings, but this ground is real low all the way around on both places. And, but the average was $12,462 is what we came up with for the average. What we're buying from TNJ Farms is .77 acres, so it's almost three quarters, slightly over three quarters of an acre, which amounts to $9,595 of tree damages, and they've got some trees out there, and he was accepting 150 on tree damages. And right-of-way damages because your, it's changes your, how you can farm that to an extent too. That was $200 and a filing fee of $50, and that keeps us under the $10,000. And he was acceptable with this.
Well, that's good. I'm glad this was all voluntary, because I'm, I've seen Mark Powers in the ditch there over the years.
Yeah.
And then Scott's probably been down there and called it something before.
This is a copy of the plat on that one.
So it means we can take it 65 mile an hour instead of 50.
We're not changing the speed limits. We're just trying to reduce the number of vehicles that are departing the road at that point.
Right, yeah.
And I look back where we've done this in the past, and particularly this side of Winthrop on the pavement on D22. And I think Scott can vouch for the fact that that's cut down on the number of roadway departures there.
Yes.
And if you look back, before we made those changes, the comment was about every 10 years, they're having a fatality on it.
That was Jake's former there.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we tried to address these when possible. The other one is just trying to be able to comply with the current guidelines, and that's where the road and the right-of-way sit. I'm a little too tight to get, to get the end of my culverts within the road right-of-way, so I've gotta buy right-of-way. And that is, I forget the exact number, but it is us .014 acres. Fourteen thousandths of an acre.
You know, we're trying to get rid of unimppoperty. Adding.
Road, second, road right-of-way easements are a different story.
Well, I think it's a good deal, so, uh, I'll go ahead. Need to, can we approve both these at the same time?
One, one item. Yeah.
Motion to proceed there.
Motion to proceed with purchasing the right way on January 35th.
Motion to do that?
First.
Second.
The second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The only other thing I had was, there was a resolution done, but I didn't get a signed copy. I don't know if Chris has a signed copy of the motion, uh, that was the 75,000.
It's in the official thing. I sent that to, I sent a copy of that to Janet last week.
Oh, that was signed?
No, I just sent her a copy just like that. They can sign it right now because the signed copy is in the official minutes.
Okay, okay, thank you. If I can get your signatures, please.
That was the one that was done in August that was taken out of the budget, and then we had to do it as an accrual. And Janet needed the information the other day for her report.
So I'll hand that to Chris. She hasn't signed it.
Not paid attention today, John?
No. Wandered.
See that?
Hey, from my standpoint, I enjoy standing up and stretching my legs. Seriously.
Do you need a copy of that?
I have the official, I have the official.
Right.
That is everything I have. You guys have any further to me?
No.
When it comes to public comments, and I'll get into what's going on in the road.
Um, Scott, Wednesday is the Patriot Ceremony out here on courthouse lawn this year because they're, apparently they're doing a cycle now. They're gonna be in one for the main, what they used to do in here with the firemen and stuff. We have moved that two months up to the school and stuff. But worse, the veterans are still doing something ceremony out here Wednesday morning. If you or any of your deafies or, Uh, if you or any of your deputies or staff are available to come out there, that'd be great.
Yeah.
That's.
I think Chris sent it out to us late last week. I sent it to the guys.
Cause this is all brought about because of nine eleven.
Yeah. Yeah. Was that at nine?
Yeah.
We have a couple transports that morning, but.
Are we to public comment?
I don't think so.
Alright.
I'll kind of update things a little bit. Worth the base stabilization. We did about nine thousand feet on, on one hundred and fiftieth street. With donated materials from Midwest Industrial Materials. And that's a polymer based stabilization. And it's basically we're gluing the road together. We will see how it performs there. Comfortable it'll be for years. Um, today we are doing fabrics that were donated by Tensar and this is their, the project that Clayton kind of initiated using the waste plastics. And we'll do another six hundred feet to, today we're doing probably another six hundred tomorrow then. And then we're getting into fabrics donated by, um, Soilmax. And Iowa State was having trouble getting their sensors for a while and Soilmax wanted their materials back because they'd sent them to me about a year ago. And I said, well, what would it cost to buy these materials if I just bought them rather than send them back? And they said about fifty thousand dollars. I was ready to say you can have them back.
I'm gonna have to bring this to me. Uh, this was in the paper about plastic disaster. Um, they did a lot of research and you know, a lot of overseas companies used to take them and not doing it anymore. It says the amount of plastics being produced today is becoming unmanageable.
Well, then quit buying stuff that's about all the plastic.
And so this is a pretty good reporting story that was done on this. So I'm gonna bring that story out there and share it.
We're having an open house tomorrow at Emergence E O C. I haven't seen the agenda on it, but I'm assuming it's gonna start at ten with some presentations and lunch. And then go out in the field and observe some being installed.
So they start at nine, second nine, but it's not.
E Clayton, I don't honestly know. And I haven't heard anything back. Um, Halil seems to have been in overseas again lately. So the and I haven't been out in the field visit with the guys this morning.
So plastics are using the same as the plastics we used on the other test that we did or?
Recycled plastics. Yes, but until we started this, there wasn't any companies producing the, the geosynthetics with the waste plastic stream. And now there's two or three companies doing it. If I'm understanding, there's one in Germany that's doing it too.
And we, uh, we've talked to the governor and different legislatures and congresspeople about this. They're excited about with this happening in Iowa. Getting this research done here and stuff on this and stuff. And actually I think we, we perked up the island gears of events too on this.
We absolutely did. Matter of fact, well, Clayton and I were with Halil when he got a call. It, uh, the Senate had informed federal highway, if I'm getting things right. That they wanted to see some research done on use of the plastics in our roads. And this, the study been, the study was underway for about a year or two at that point in time. So we're anticipating more monies and more funding coming that way. Again, we took, we took a subject from the very beginning and trying to trying to work on it that way. And improve our roads too. So.
I have a meeting while this, I won't be able to go to ten tomorrow.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, I missed seeing Scott at our road, local road safety plan, but I know thanks come on.
Good, yeah. How'd that go anyway?
Went pretty good. They did have a bunch of questions on law enforcement's activities. John, help me on this. In particular, whether we're doing the, um, working with the governor's traffic safety bureau on the stops and drug tests and and as you're well aware, the seatbelt issues are an issue here.
Yep.
Yeah.
A lot of the questions were about the annual semi-annual state, the special safety traffic enforcement program.
Yep.
And we couldn't really answer real well, but, uh, I, I know the local departments participate and the patrol does, but I.
And the sheriff's.
Yeah.
We did a lot more with it, well, with the, um, say gases, not gas, uh, step. Enforcement. We applied for the grants last year, um, and got some overtime budget money to put um, extra deputies out, um, just doing enforcement. Honestly, with our numbers, it's just, it was hard to get people to sign up during those time periods. And that's one of the reasons why we didn't do it this year. Um, it's, it was the, the scheduling of it and without basically forcing deputies on their time off to.
And burnout can be a factor.
So that's why we didn't apply for, um, that grant this year. It was, it was hard to get people scheduled to, um, be out there and do that extra.
I think it's pretty effective, but it's, it's hard to get the manpower to do it.
We can still participate in those. Um, we can, um, but a lot of times we just use the deputies that are working on that timeframe if they can incorporate or get out there to enforce in, in the areas that, um, are targeted at that time.
Yeah.
But.
Hardly only have two or three.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was discussed during that, just two people on duty typically, how do you get, how do you handle a bunch of this other stuff? Well, it's speeding on the rock roads. Yeah. How are you gonna enforce that one?
Well, and, and I noticed, you know, especially with semis, when it's dry, we get a lot more complaints of speeders. Um, and we do go out there, but usually it's not excessive to the point where it's, you know, a, a eighteen wheeler going down a rock road at fifty-five mile an hour.
Creates a lot more dust than a freight.
You know, when it does, it looks like it's a freight train. They go out there and actually radar it is, it's, it's not speedy.
Yeah, we see that when we're resurfacing. Yeah, and even those trucks doing thirty-five, forty, oh, they're doing.
Yeah.
Now on the other side of the coin, I hear complaints that we'll have cars driving on our rock roads at excessive rates of speeds. Some of that, yeah, because there's. And then we kind of looked at the car that was hit on the hundred and thirtieth and and Grant, the fatal that we had, not Grant, that's Indiana.
Dylan. Dylan and hundred twenty. Oh, that wasn't a fade in.
The fatal at a hundred and thirtieth in Indiana.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And that Chevy Equinox driving that Buick, three, four hundred feet north.
Yeah.
I wonder what the speed was. Is it actually?
Kind of a bit back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That indicates there was something going on.
Yeah. One other thing I want to bring up about road, another things here. Um, this might lead to more things here about gravel road dust. And I think this might, we might hear more about this in the future. Because Kentucky and Iowa is tied and they're talking about how it affects your lungs. Kentucky and Iowa's tied for lung cancer cases and stuff, top states.
True.
And, uh, so if that's proven that's got anything to do with it and the environmentalists get a hold of this and work on this and stuff like that. There might be something in the future of this road dust. I, who knows where it could lead to.
So that mean we need to pave all our roads?
Dust control.
Yeah, where's the millions coming in there?
Right, exactly. But you don't know, we just don't know where that could happen if there's certainly environmental lobbyists get a hold of this and and can be, show convincing facts that, uh, this is causing health issues. We don't know where it can lead.
What taxes like Wisconsin's?
No, 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 that wouldn't begin to touch it. It's just like one of the county engineers in Illinois, or not Illinois, Minnesota, she wrote me back a few years ago and we were talking Frost Oil's two thousand nineteen. She said, Brian, we don't have that much trouble. We try to keep about nine inches of rock on our roads. Yeah, I've done the math on that. That's about fifty million dollars worth of rock.
We wouldn't have to rock our roads if they were paved.
That's true. But two million miles. Just give me a couple billion dollars.
No problem.
Can you read the stack out of my personal stack book?
Yeah.
Manassan Benton's would be really happy.
What's that?
Manassan Benton's would be really happy.
Yes, yes, yes.
Taking the roads. Actually.
Yeah. Well, thin asphalt, we know, especially with the heavier trucks.
Hasn't pulled up, has it?
Yeah. And that's Chris Williams studies asphalt Iowa State. And we had a state senator making the comment that all the counties have been building these roads heavy enough for the heavier trucks since the nineteen seventies.
Yeah.
Well, the nineteen seventies tire pressure, we're in the vicinity of seventy PSI. And a lot of more bio supplies. Nowadays, a hundred and fifteen's common in the trucks. And I'm hearing reports of much higher than that.
And Zumba, you said something about that.
He was the one.
He was the one at the, I went to town hall meeting and the market and where his statement was made.
Dr. Chris Williams at Iowa State says going from seventy PSI to four hundred, art, uh, to a hundred and fifteen PSI is a four hundred and forty-three percent increase in the damages to roads. And just like our aggregates going to pieces, it would have probably lasted longer without the heavier tire pressures.
But if they're having to run less often over the road than in the price saving diesel and gas.
Or then maybe that would justify some increases in the taxes, but that, and that's really where some of these subjects really need to go. Where does the board want me to focus? You kind of capped it at about a two percent increase in taxes.
Right.
My costs are going up five. Where do you want me to spend my monies?
No, everybody's costs are going up five.
Yeah.
Make more class B roads. Uh, one other thing I want to bring up and beans, we have got three watersheds and John's involved with them. Uh, something else that's been, it's gonna be pushed down in the legislatures down there. It's an amendment to Iowa's constitution that recognizes citizens' fundamental right to access clean water and clean air. So that'll be something that's gonna be debated down there in Des Moines.
I wonder what they're gonna do. They already have, every city around here is doing more with their sanitary sewers.
Yeah, the D N R pretty much mandates what we gotta do.
If you read this article, uh, it relates back to me and John Bothford, the speaker on it, Chris Jones. A lot against the change in agricultural farming practices.
I think I sent over the weekend, uh, article from Chris Jones, you guys again about the, uh, water issues. And it's interesting reading anyway.
It's interesting reading, but I'm not gonna tell a farmer how he has, how he farms.
They do it in Minnesota.
Well, that not Minnesota.
Sadly, the issue is that it's affecting everybody in state Iowa.
Hmm, right.
State legislature can determine that.
Yep, that's why I said it's being brought up down there. So first move towards that direction is getting the amendment to constitution. And then they can go start working further on.
Isn't there funding for, um, cleanup of water? I mean, don't farmers get something for cleanup?
Oh, it used to be certain things. There used to be certain programs out there. Like, uh, they were trying to convince farmers to use cover crops and they're still saying that cover crops weren't very well. But it started out a cost share type of thing where a farmer could get cost see how well it was working for them and stuff like that. But I, I believe in a lot of that cost share has went away now. And trying to talk them into doing bioreactors and stuff, but yeah, it's just a matter of putting a bioreactor in it, but then, then down the road, you got that ten or twenty year maintenance that you have to do on a bioreactor.
There was a time when they've helped pay for buffer strips too, and that went away too. And that was a big one, keeping the soil out of the ditch.
Yeah. Buffer strips, I think along the, I think is what they're actually going after, isn't it?
It was a lot of just a ten foot buffer strip. It's gotta be twenty-five or fifty, but to actually be effective.
Yeah.
I know, uh, Northeast Iowa, RC and D, who is also our, uh, watershed coordinators. They're doing a lot with, uh, the cover crop initiatives and stuff. And there are some funds out there to help with that, but, uh, it's just trying to get the buy-ins from the farmers because it is more costly. It really is.
They, you know, it's like they run an effort out there. They gotta see the cost effectiveness before they do it.
What they found is it does save huge on their cost to chemicals.
Hmm.
Uh, but it costs them more in labor and time devoted to maintaining these cover crops. And so many of our farmers kind of like that, working three months out of the year and vacationing the rest of the time.
I don't know. I, my brother-in-law's farming. I don't see him going on any vacation and they work more than three months out of the year.
Well, he's got a different story. He's even one of the few that's still got livestock.
Red dairy cows, yeah.
Yeah. Don't leave it all.
I can't believe you just said that.
I'm not.
Cap, you doing?
Yes, I do. Um, Wednesday night we had our P and Z meeting up at the E M for emergency management. Is that what you call it?
Yeah.
In the building. And luckily there was just the four applicants. And four of the P and Z commissioners and Amber. Nothing ran, a network. It, she had to pick up her little, um, computer to show us stuff. She wasn't prepared to I normally chat with me, you know, some kind of thing so everybody could see it or whatever. And luckily there was just
So this, she got plugged into the system?
And I'm like, why don't we have paid tax here? Do they not go out there and make sure? And somebody knew that it was not working.
Well, Chris Eric is very familiar with the operation to that system out there.
They were waiting. I understood that they were waiting for our office town. I'm like, why are we waiting for office town? You're having a meeting here. We're setting her up for failure.
Hmm.
And we don't need to do that at all. I was not very happy.
It, it reflects badly on her whether it should or not.
If we had a whole room and she walks in there and had to do what she did, that's not acceptable at all. And I, so I don't know why we were waiting for office town to come out there.
Well, we were, had a meeting, um, this last week. Maybe we can start running together. Anyway, and the monsters were coming, were flicking on and flicking off and flipping on and flipping off. So they think one of the, some connector thing is maybe overheating. And so I think that's what they're, was, you know.
Tough in, is that?
Yes.
We had the same thing at the safety meeting where all the screens on the south wall.
One wall, yeah.
Looking on and off and.
Yeah.
They've got some issues out there.
Well, I think it may, I mean, if they know, then it's, I guess it's really important that office town understands.
Importance.
Recall, you come. Might have wrong.
That's emergency.
Yes. And I mean, if you were having meetings out there too, I mean, what do we got? Eight, nine TVs out there? And not one of them she could hook up to?
Yeah, I agree.
And she's hooked up to them before.
She has.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if the system.
Luchetta did.
Well, I think actually Amber knows how to do it. Amber actually said that stopped the hooking up. Yeah, so if the system was working. If the system was working at one point in time, I don't know why that piece of equipment is now giving us a problem, but.
I was just, I, I thought, good thing we don't have a room full of people.
Right.
John, I'm thinking that we ought to designate the chairs to take care of this problem. I think so.
You guys are just lucky it's Monday morning and I don't.
My other thing is too. When you guys were talking about the birds and all that, I didn't know where that was at. That needs to be just enclosed.
It is, yeah, that's gonna prove and that's. That's, that's all approved and on.
I wouldn't remember where you guys were at with that, but I'm like, I mean, and it's right at the door, pretty much.
It's horrible.
It's horrible. It's like, it needs to be power washed and cleaned up. And not that they need to do that often, but somebody needs to go out there and just clean it up every so often and. I mean, because if you are using it and you've got public coming in and out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess it was a good TV, another monitor for her to hook up to, but Amber said it wasn't a big deal.
And make sure there's no nests up there when you're doing it. Because there was a contractor in Oklahoma got fined three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for tearing the bar cliff swallow nests off a bridge that had eggs in them.
Well, you contacted the contractor, right?
Yeah. And I'll reach out again and I told him, I says, you know. I said, definitely, definitely, this needs to be done for General Watcher, but I'm gonna push to get it done sooner. He's waiting for a rainy day, but this week is not no rain.
No rain in across the entire United States is what I was hearing as I was driving up here.
Yeah, so.
Well, and to you, Don, I'm sure to Amber it wasn't.
Right, but to.
To me, as an outsider, I just. And I thought, you know, we have a brand new system. Why is it not working? And if they knew it was not working, why do we have somebody out there to fix it? If you're having meetings out there, anybody else.
Right.
It's, it's just unacceptable.
Picture act.
I would agree. They spent a lot of money on that.
Exactly.
And there's no reason it shouldn't be.
And I don't know who designed the room, but it's not very friendly in my book.
Well, it was designed to be an emergency operations center too. Like it wasn't designed to be a meeting room.
How often do they meet?
Wait for it, Billy.
Yeah. Actually, yeah.
But this, this, this all started out there and.
And talking to um. Chris, sounds like there's some parts on order for that problem that they're having. So electronic stuff. So they know they have an issue and I think backtrack and they're trying to figure out where the issues come from. I think they got it figured out, but um. They're just waiting on some parts of.
I need to pass this information on because that's where we're meeting that tomorrow and we have presentations and. Then sorry.
There's the one monitor.
For, but you have to move it. Which you can't do by yourself or you're, if you break it.
Is this, is this on a cart that gets rolling?
No, it's just, it was on a stand.
On a stand. Um, about that meeting room area. Previous board. When we started working on approving this building out there, purchasing and everything and. And meeting room and everything, it was stated by the board that they would. One of the criterias to support this is that room could be used for all county meetings.
It can be used for other meetings, but its primary purpose is an emergency operations center. That's how we got the funding.
Yeah. But I don't want anybody to think that that's the only reason that that's for all county meetings out there.
That's why it was laid out, the way it was laid out.
It's just not a very friendly room in my book. If it, if it was gonna be used for other things other than that.
Um, well, in order for us to get the two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, it had to be emergency operations center. So that mean that was, that's its primary purpose.
They need to have the, it's circular so that they're in a like a U shape or whatever, the tables.
Yeah.
Scott, you have a. No, I was always gonna ask um. Oh, cool, you know, if that's the way they happen to be.
Well, I think they tried to optimize this, you know, get it set up so they can optimize. The most number of people and plus like all those tables have power to them. So setting up uh. Something for a smaller round table or something like that is, it's hard to do.
Exactly.
With the, you know, having power to, so you can plug in things on the tables and things like that. So it's kind of a. It's harder to. Move tables around and reorganize things with um, some of the technology that is out there and.
Well, they have pretty good sized tables. I mean.
They're very heavy.
Very heavy and very. No, you're not gonna move them.
Yeah.
So. That's the first thing when I went in there and I seen that, so there's gonna be a lot of cases where this room is not very user friendly.
Well, we had the one big meeting out there and so we did have them smushed in between and along the sides and it worked. But at the same point, it. I don't know. I guess I don't under, didn't understand what they used it for, how often they used it.
You know, it needs storm chaser training and a lot of people have different trains and exercises.
Quite a few things out there.
Okay.
Yeah. Speaking of one big meeting we had out there for the adjustments, so have you got any feedback from Black Hawk County Sheriff or anything on how? The festival went up there?
No, I have not.
Oh, did you not see what was going on on Facebook? In Evansdale, they have one lady in Evansdale that was playing what she heard in her house all night long. We heard it in Jessup.
See, that's what I was wondering if.
Yeah. I got some friends that live over there near the old uh, hospital ferry and stuff over there, uh. What the name of the hospital used to be.
Choice.
Choice.
Not, no, not Choice.
Satoria or.
Oh, but anyway, they live in that area.
Your St. Francis Hospital. Yeah, there you go.
There you go. And they, her windows were vibrating and shaking in her house all night from that music that far away.
I think there was something.
I sent on a. Uh, video of a councilman from Waterloo that. Was sharing his. Thoughts and uh, experience talking to people that had to experience it and it was bad. We have friends that live off by South Hills where all the cow streets are out there and uh.
And I don't know if that was by Blackhawk or if that's Waterloo.
It's probably.
That was Waterloo, yeah.
It was Waterloo, yeah. But you imagine what kind of problems.
They had it on their noise stock. One A, one A M, but they kept going till six.
Oh, you figured they were going to.
Yeah, well, and we knew they were gonna do it here.
Yeah.
They were gonna shut that.
They didn't care.
The, the loudness wasn't gonna come down at one o'clock.
Yeah.
I could have told you that immediately.
They needed to shut it off at one o'clock.
Yeah, right. Why do you need to have music all night long?
And why are you asking everybody's hearing?
That love. Anyway, we, far as board adjustment, make a wide decision in what I feel.
I think so too.
I agree.
I mean, it just sounded like in Jessup, it sounded like somebody was driving by with a bass on.
Yeah.
So, and that's. You know, anything else for the good of the father? If not.
I just wanna let everybody reminder that uh. The foundation people with the sump pumps and everything, I'd be gonna assume they can hear from Anthony, you're starting on that project down in the basin. He's supposed to be here to work on your lights maybe tomorrow.
It's coming in tomorrow because I have to be here by six tomorrow. So I have an election tomorrow.
And anyway, and in uh, the. Advanced environmental for the pipe insulation for the hydrants. He's supposed to be here on, he's scheduled to be here the sixteenth.
I am showing a contractor the DHS building. And getting, because the first contractor is very excited about doing the work, so.
The doghouse and that interior work and needs are done. You need to get that wrapped.
Yep, and then we have the money for the um. Senior center to replace that hole that we cut in the wall and to do, finish that up. So I was thinking about having uh, one of the building supply come in and look at the windows and figure out which ones and how much and what they can do. If that's okay with everybody?
Yep, we need to move forward and get this stuff wrapped up.
There's nothing else? Motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
And second, all in favor?
Alright.
Being adjourned at ten o'clock.
Well, one of us will need to.